I would like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of September 15th. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. And the sad news of the ambush to those two LA County sheriffs is totally devastating and extremely inappropriate, and we wish them a speedy and healthy recovery. Also, for the victims of all the many, many fires, the loss of life, property, especially, well, there's no time, COVID or not, it's absolutely terrible. So let's have a moment of silence for all of them. And of course, for all those firefighters that are on the line and all of that staff, of course. Please be seated. And if we could please have the roll call.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Ponse.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And V F O, we have Councilmember Lavelle, are you there?
Here.
And we also have City Attorney Scott Campbell.
Hello, Lisa, and hello, Scott. Okay, do we have announcements in written communications?
We do. I have things from the city clerk's office, and that is just a, the deadline to register online to vote is Monday, May 19th. If you are going to register to vote by the mail, it has to be post-sparked by that same Monday, October 19th. You can go to lavote.net to confirm your registration if you are a vote-by-mail person or if you are registered even and what address you're at. And also that because this election is run by the county, they are sending us updates and they have not sent us anything firm yet on voting locations or ballot drop-off or who the poll workers are. So I'll be waiting for that information. We are going to have a special city council meeting. I thought we had it all firmed up, but I might need to send out some more times. Otherwise, we would have one council member missing, and I don't want that to happen on a very important budget study session. So stay tuned, I hope to firm that up for you all tomorrow.
Okay.
But it's still hopefully going to be on Monday, the 28th. I just don't have the time yet for you. And then I'll just put as a city manager report that last Friday, the city finance director, myself and the city treasurer, we had a Zoom conference call with Supervisor Hahn's office, asking her for some help in negotiating some of our county contracts. And she had three other staff members that were on the call with us. They were sympathetic to our cause, but did let us know that we were not special or unique in any way, that she had other cities in her jurisdiction that were under the same plight as us. So I am working with two of her staff members to help us with some of the contracts, though.
Thank you.
We'll keep you updated on that.
Disappointing. Okay, Department Head report?
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got two items to report out. Air quality, over the last week, air quality has been at an unhealthy level here in Avalon. This occurs when the particulate matter in the air gets the air quality index level of 150 or greater than mass or recommended. And that's important to us, we have for everybody on the island, but also for our employees, and especially our public works employees that are outside. The recommended masks for this is N95. The city has an ample supply of those for our employees that were donated to us, so JJ has those. And we also have annual training for working under these conditions such as when the environment creates an unhealthy or hazardous condition. So we have annual training that, so everybody's prepared for this. And it's business as usual, really. It just happens to be that it's smoke instead of some other dust. And then second item is phase one progress. Today, the contractor estimated the job would be complete in six weeks. Again, this is an estimate, as we are revirating a wharf that's in the ocean, so lots of variables impact the schedule. But the contractor is likely the best guesser at a good guess at this, as he's been out there since last August. And you can see the remaining work right in front of him, whereas, you know, four or five months ago, still there was work to be done underneath that all of the demolition hadn't been completed, so we hadn't exposed all the, what I call the noceums. And that's what causes the quantities and the prices to go up. So that being said, next week, I'm scheduled to go over the closeout forecast of the quantities with the project manager on the contractor's side, and then we'll be planning to have those numbers ready for the budget session that City Manager just spoke of. So we would have the results of that. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple noteworthy incidents that happened since the last council meeting. One is there was two Hobie Cat sailboats off Catalina. They, one capsized with two people on it, and they put the two people and their property on the other sailboat, and then the other one capsized. The U.S. Coast Guard responded and pulled all four people out of the water. They got them to Avalon Harbor and discovered that one of them possessed a handgun, cocaine, and marijuana. They called us, we went down and arrested the one individual. It's a health and safety code for possession of a loaded gun and cocaine together. Another incident we had was at Von's. There was a small group of people, approximately six, and a couple of them were not wearing their masks. When the employees told them to wear their masks, they got into a big argument and they called the deputies. When the deputies got there, the group was already outside, starting to walk down Sumner. One was issued a citation for possession of an open container, alcohol, and the second was issued a citation for a no mask. And that was that one. And then probably the most noteworthy this week was, in the 100 block of Sumner, there's a business, and a gentleman walks in and he's using the ATM machine without a mask. An argument ensues after the employees tell him he has to have a mask if he's going to be inside the business. Some threats are made, there's a fight, the cash register ends up basically on the floor, almost out the door of the business, and the deputies are able to get there and place them under arrest for several things: assaulting the employee, not wearing a mask, and interfering with an open business. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question, and I don't know if it's for Scott or for Denise or whatever. So the $100 administrative citations, so if the people don't pay it, what happens? Here comes Matt Baker.
Okay, I'll let Matt handle it.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much.
So we actually have started to receive some payments, but for individuals that don't pay, what our process will be, and it's similar to other sites, we'll send out a letter to the individual. We have their address as part of the citation, notifying them they have a time period to pay, and if they do not pay, we will send it to collections. We already have a company that we work with for other collections purposes, and so ultimately that will be the path. We're still kind of working out the details of the process, but ultimately, the individual with the citation, if they don't pay, will receive a letter from the city instructing them to pay within a certain time period, or it'll be sent to a collections.
And so something gets sent to collections, and they still don't pay. What, I mean, let's just-
That would go against your credit reporting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it'll hurt them in the long run.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Yeah, thank you, Matt.
And ultimately, Mayor, we do have the right, under our code, to take them to small claims court for the amount. That would have to be, city staff would do that, and so we would have to work with Judge Mirich to have that day in Avalon for all these small claim matters, if it came to that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, and some up here, I'll-
Yes, please.
Go forward with my update. It's Matt Baker, Finance Director. I just wanted to report out on the ad tax audit. I've received the findings from our auditor. Notices right now are being drafted to be sent to the businesses that were audited. There were some findings that are going to require corrective actions on some of the businesses that were audited, but just purely from a revenue standpoint, there's approximately $50,000 in monies owed to the city that were identified as part of the audit compared to the $20,000, the cost of the audit to perform it. So just again, showing the value of these audits. You know, we are expecting to earn about $30,000 for doing the audit.
And that was under how many, with how many businesses audited?
Eight businesses were selected as part of the audit.
And how many more do we have?
Ad taxpayers, I'd say probably four times that safely, so-
Oh, okay, good.
We did make the selection, though, or the auditors made the selection based on several criteria, and one of it was looking at the larger payers. So we have some ad taxpayers that, there's a wide range in payments, so we did kind of target, or the auditors targeted based on their selection criteria, which did factor kind of the size of the business.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
And then just quickly to report on July visitor revenues. I'm happy to report that TOT for the month came in around 67% of prior July, while, you know, that is still hundreds of thousands of dollars less than we received the prior July. It is better than some of our worst-case estimates. It's too soon to tell with August, but just kind of word of mouth, early indicators, you know, I'm expecting as strong, if not stronger, August. Ab tax came in around 45%, so there was a noticeable difference there. Similarly, cross-channel warfage came in around 47% of prior July. So while those numbers were better than some of our conservative estimates, they're still far lower. Another way to look at it, July revenues visitor-driven were about $800,000 less than the same July period. So while better than some of our estimates, it's still a ways to go. And last thing on here, I was going to mention that we did recollect our first mask citation the other day, and so hopefully we'll start seeing more of those come in.
Right. Any questions, Finance Director? Matt, thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Here we go, wow.
Yeah.
Just give a little update on Labor Day, since we were two weeks out of Labor Day. The week of Labor Day, from Thursday to Sunday, we had over 358 boats that equated to 1,375 total nights. Along with that, prior Monday to Thursday, we had 396 boats. And so we had a full harbor. People come, people go, get in, get out, but we had a really good harbor. And the following Thursday, we were in that same, 350 some boats for the week, last weekend. So we plan on having another good weekend, phone calls and stuff coming in, so that's a good thing. Our patrol officers worked with LA County Sheriff. We responded to the express dock where assault was taking place. Our patrol officer got on scene and were able to separate the people and tell the sheriffs got there, the sheriffs got there pretty quickly, and they ended up, I'm not quite sure if they cited a guy out or what the outcome was, but we got our guys back in the boat and back to taking care of boats. During the weekend, last weekend and Labor Day weekend, we experienced some pretty good 30 knot southeast winds that we had inevitably had to just shut the harbor down long enough to take one boat at a time to the moorings. So people couldn't even get off their moorings without wrapping up. We had like 15 or 20 wrap-ups, so it was a crazy day for the guys out there. You know, kudos to Orin and his staff out there. They did a heck of a job, so, anyway. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Glad to stay where you are.
Uh-oh. Holy Lord.
JJ, don't worry, I'm going to dance if there's a delay.
Jason, look at-
Let me go over to you, or?
Sure, so we have a proclamation here for James Joseph Poindexter. A proclamation to the city of Avalon honoring James Poindexter for his 35 years with the city of Avalon.
Whereas JJ Poindexter began his extensive career with the city of Avalon in 1973 as seasonal trash boy, which earned him a $2.33 per hour wage. He also went on-
He gets more for a two from the two exam.
He also went on to hold the position of part-time harbor patrolman, senior trash boat operator, and intermittent jailer. In 1977, JJ resigned from the city to pursue other ventures, only to return on September 26th, 1989, as a full-time harbor patrol officer. In January 1998, Mr. Poindexter was promoted to Assistant Harbor Master and held the role of Training Officer and First Aid and CPR/ AED Instructor for the Harbor Department. During his time at the city, JJ attended training for marine firefighting, port security, boom deployment with Southern California Edison Company, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department 832 PC class, the Los Angeles County District's Attorney's Office on Law and Report Writing, ICS 100 Incident Command System, and ICS 200 Basic Incident Command Systems for Initial Response, and obtained his EMT certification. In July 2017, JJ was promoted to interim Harbor Master and then to Harbor Master in December 2017. As a Harbor Master, JJ directs and coordinates activities of Avalon Harbor to ensure enforcement of laws, regulations, and policies governing navigable waters and property under jurisdiction of municipality or port district. Confers with officials such as port authorities, Coast Guard officers, and members of city council to establish policy, define responsibilities, and determine operating requirements. JJ also issues general instruction and outline of departmental policies regarding water traffic control, public safety, prepares periodic activities to report, and the Harbor Department's annual budget. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Avalon express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for JJ's dedication and commitment to the city, and congratulate him on the occasion of his retirement with the city of Avalon, and wish him the best and continued success in his retirement and future endeavors. Date is 15th day of September 2020 by Mayor and Avalon City Council. Congratulations.
You make it sound like it just, I don't know, you know, it's... Who would ever thought COVID-19 would come up? To create such a devastating ploy to the city's and our nation's economy. I would like to take it this time to introduce Orin Kostarfen. He will be interim Harbor Master carrying the torch forward for the department. Orin has 27 years with the department. Orin started as a part-time patrol officer in 1991 and was hired full-time in 1997. During Orin's part-time working with the department, while on graveyard, he was vessel assist captain and spent many days out on the water. His water experience is really extensive, which makes him perfect for this job, because he understands the weather, he understands the water, and he understands the operation. I would like to thank a few people, all the men and women of the past and the present who have worked with at the Harbor Department. I would also like to thank LA County Baywatch lifeguard paramedics, which are far too many names to remember right now, and being able to work alongside with them and do the things we did during the time of need: storms, summer times, boat fires. Our department and Baywatch paramedics, Avalon and ISMS, worked cohesively together, and I was proud to work with them. And I go clear back to Matt Hamilton, Paul McElroy, who, Paul McElroy, by the way, was my best man at my wedding. I would like to also thank Avalon Fire Department, the men and women throughout the years that I've worked with so close to, that made a difference in people's lives. We've had some unbelievable slaves. We made a difference in people's lives. We actually made a difference. And when you make a difference in somebody's life, there isn't a drug-around that can give you that high. So I'm very proud to work with them. I'd like to special shout-out to Chief Mike Krug for his unreeling support and friendship. Without the guidance in his leadership skills, steering me through all the department head minefields that are out there. He's been a tremendous friend, and his ability to remain calm under pressure and focus on what he needs to focus. He's my number-one friend, and I just want to shout-out to him, and, you know, I'm not sure if he's watching or not. Denise, thank you for all your guidance and support through this journey. Your understanding and friendship throughout the past four years have been very much appreciated. You remind me a lot of your dad, who I worked with in the city throughout the years. This is a difficult time, and you have shown your efforts, and I just want to say thank you, one, for being my boss, and two, for being my friend. And by the, off the chance, you all live around Jeopardy, and they ask you, what did JJ do? Who did he work for? You can answer. What is, worked for four Harbor Masters, starting with Dean Carlson, ending with Brian Bray. That was Bill Harvey and John Phelps in between. I worked with John Phelps as a part-time harbor patrolman. I've worked for 11 city managers, starting with Jack Osteen. A lot of you don't even know who that is, but, and ending with Denise Ratty. I also want to throw a shout-out to ex-city manager David Jenkins, for, he's the one that originally hired me and taken a chance on me, and I greatly appreciate that. I've worked for eight mayors through my career. Ray Rydel in '72-'74, Norm Perliss, who was my eighth-grade English teacher, I think, Rudy Pelch, Irene Strobel, Bud Smith multiple times, Ralph Moore multiple times, Bob Kennedy and Annie Marshall. It's been a great run. I appreciate all. I appreciate you at the council being able to attack this COVID-19 thing that we're in. Obviously, it's not over. And is that three minutes? I got to give it up?
Nope.
Linda? Oh. Anyway, I appreciate it, thank you very much, and I think that you will be really, really impressed, as I have been with Orin. And I've worked close with him, and I think that between his crew now, we're only, as Department Heads, as good as our crew. You know, our weakest crew is, you know, we're only as good as they are. So he's fair, he's consistent, and he's loyal. And, Orin, thank you. All right, I'm done.
Thank you. Okay. City Manager report? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Sorry, Dan.
Oh, I'm doing more than just cleaning here.
I know.
I picked a bad time to go last here. Thank you, Meta Mayor, members of the council. Just a few updates, some dates that are coming up. Want to remind you of the blood drive, October 1st and 2nd, Thursday and Friday, 1st and 2nd, from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. at St. Catherine's Parish Hall. You can go to www redcrossblood.org and register, pre-register in advance there. On October 3rd, Saturday the 3rd, War Heroes on Water, their fishing tournament will be back down. It's, I believe, a three-day tournament. They, I don't think they culminate, but on Saturday, they have asked permission to do a flyover, a military flyover at 5:00 o'clock. So we have let the authorities know that that will be taking place. It's scheduled for October 3rd, Saturday at 5:00 p.m. Staff is currently working on Halloween activities. At a minimum, we're going to do a golf cart parade, and we'll have more information out at the next meeting. I think we're going to take advantage, I just looked, it's on a Saturday, we're going to take advantage of, it'll be on a weekend, and I think we've got some fun things planned. We just need to kind of set the details a little bit more, and we'll be at the next meeting with those details. And then lastly, just wanted a quick report out on our supervised child care program. We're a week and a half into it. This would not be possible without the very generous donation from the Catalina Island Yacht Club, $10,000 donation. We wouldn't be having this discussion if we didn't have that donation from them. So thank you to them. Also, thank you to Singing Waters, the Christian Center. They were using their facilities, we're outdoors with the ability to go indoors. This first week, we had 12 students, averaging eight or nine per day. This week, we're at 14 students. I think we've got nine most days, I think we've got 10 one day, with the ability to either come all week or just come once a week. And it looks like we've started a, we have started a waiting list, and it looks like we'll probably spill over to a second location at Avalon Community Church this next week. So if you're interested, please contact the Recreation Department, and we can assist you with that. So with that, any questions?
I heard something about the primetimers.
You did?
Yeah. I didn't get it, but my other primetime friends did.
Are you old enough?
Oh.
So we are planning a Two Harbors trip. Two Harbors trip, Island Company has offered 50% off, so one-way ticket, and then the fee for it is $15 to get back. So it'll be nothing out of the pocket of the city, social distance all the way, protocols on the boats, you know, masks. And so that will be September 30th. It's a Wednesday, September 30th, and you can also call the Recreation Department here to register for that.
Right. Any questions or comments?
Can I just add to the comments regarding the blood drive on October 1st and 2nd, that the organizers are asking if participants can please register ahead of time, make an appointment ahead of time, especially during these COVID times. And with that, all donors will be tested for the COVID-19 antibody. So you'll get that information as well.
Good, thank you.
Dan, a question. If anyone wants to inquire about the DayCamp scholarship, what would they need?
Excuse me?
The scholarship for their DayCamp, if they need assistance?
If they are in the lunch program at the school, that would get them the scholarship. So, yeah, as long as they qualify for that, that's what we're looking for.
Thank you.
And I think, Michael, you might touch on the cleanup day in your updates?
We Rotary and the City did cleanup last Thursday, small group, but we picked up quite a bit. I don't mean to go on a rant, but I'm going to go on a rant, because if you saw my Facebook post, "What the hell, people? You live here. Why are you dumping your garbage into the cactus at Hogsback?" Or three palms. Or Buena Vista Point? Or Lover's Cove? It is disgusting. If you can take it up there and drink it, you can bring the garbage back with you or throw it in the garbage cans." It's just, sorry, I didn't mean to go on a rant, but it, it's disgusting. It's disgusting that this is what our visitors see and so their, our visitors think, "Oh, I can do the same thing." It's just really disappointed, disappointing in this community that we allow that to happen. And the one other little thing that really got to me when we were up at Hogsback is all the friggin' cigarette butts. I'm sorry, there are fires burning over there. You've got a cigarette butt, it gets out of hand, and we're back into 2007 when we had the island fire. So, respect your island, respect your community. That's all I got to say. Other than that, it was a great little event, but the few people that we did have come out to do it.
Yeah, we were small but mighty. I think we had about eight of us and they collected about 25 bags worth of trash. So, we had a nice haul. We have a second one planned for November 14th. It's a Saturday morning at 9:00. And we've, I've reached out actually today to Mr. Tony to see if we can get him back on the island to partake in that. So, it'd be kind of fun to do, so, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. City manager?
I have nothing, I already reported out, but I would like, Michael Palmer, I asked him to reach out to Catalina Broadband after having a short conversation with Councilmember Ponce. So, I'd like him just to report on what he found out of what transpired on Friday night, on the city hall node, they called it.
Okay.
Yeah, so there was a service disruption that occurred on Friday. This actually affected both internet as well as video. When we inquired, they said, basically, they were having some interference with their signal and so they needed to go in and they needed to pad their amplifier, so they needed to restore that. The good news is it was eventually restored on Saturday, both services. First, it was internet followed by video. They are looking at a longer-term solution, so this is a short-term fix, but they believe it's going to continue to hold through, throughout the weekend. They should not have any additional disruptions, but they are looking for a way to permanently address the amplifier issues. So, any questions on that?
No, but I want to make a comment about it. Sorry, it's rant day. I'm sorry, 8:30 on a Friday night for internet to go down and cable to go down here at Eclipse Gardens, the Holiday Inn, Fairview Terrace, and probably out towards Bird Park is unacceptable. But the hotel guests at the Holiday Inn did not have TV service until sometime Saturday morning is mind-boggling. That this is kind of a common thing, I mean, this went out on Friday. I'm going to, I'm going to do my little rant. I upgraded my, my cable so I could start getting Home and Garden, Food Network. Those have not come back yet from when they went down on Friday, they have not come back. When I signed, when I upgraded was mid-September and in mid-September, things were going bad here in town and was, you were getting a lot of breaking up. It got better for one week. So, I'm paying for a service that I'm not getting service for because I can't watch what I want to watch because their service is not up to par. They need to do something. And the fact that they don't apologize to this community that spends money on them and is just expected that we're going to take it, and we shouldn't. It's just getting ridiculous. Rant over.
That's okay. And didn't, didn't Edison, didn't, didn't we hear from DeeDee and that gentleman that was on the phone call the other morning that something was going to be happening with Edison and something was going to be shut down?
Yes, there'll be a power outage tomorrow, which is Wednesday. It should last through the day. 5:00 is the latest and I believe it is all of the lower metro pole from the Community Church all the way down to Crescent and then from Old Vons all the way up to the corner, past Casa Marquita and a little, and a couple houses up towards Caia del Sol. They are repairing some damages down in their vaults there. And so, both sides of the street have already been blocked off with signs to prevent parking. And they didn't want people to park, obviously, on the side that they're working on and on the other side, they wanted to be able to have cars and vehicles accessing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
It's the city attorney, did you have anything to report?
Nothing tonight, but in an upcoming meeting after all, the legislation has been signed by the governor. I will be providing an update as to those matters which will impact the city.
Okay, thank you. City, councilmember reports?
Can I continue?
Sure, I got, I got, good point.
Okay, so I did broadband. We have been asking people to respond to the census. There are canvassers here in town trying to continue doing the census and they're getting nothing. They are not getting the cooperation that they need in which to do a census that will make sure that we get the money that we deserve by our population. They are not checking for, they are not checking to see if you're documented or not, they just want to know who's living in the house and if they're full-time residents. That's all they need. They are not going to come back and get you, but we need to get this. And I guess some of them are getting a lot of grief when they're out there trying to get information. I was also informed today that one of them went to one of vacation rental companies and they kind of dug, threw them out, saying, "We don't have to give you any information because we have signed a confidential agreement with our owners." And I find that highly unlikely that they can just say, "No, you can't do the count." I'm not sure what happened there, but, but that's what I was told. But please, we've been asking you to follow up with the census. Now that the canvassers are here, please work with them. They're here to help us. And then, on a nice little thing, this normally would have been art festival weekend, but with COVID, there is no art festival. But Catalina Art, the Facebook page Catalina Art, go to the page, a lot of the artists that would have been showing here, they are showing their work on the Facebook page and you can get information from those artists that may have been here. Try to support the Catalina Art Association and the artists that were not able to come to the island for a great weekend. And then the last thing is that I will be attending Contract Cities tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
I'll add to the census around that. I did also have people concerned that they weren't counted or double-counted, so that information is also passed down to the specialists we're working with, but I'll go ahead and add your comment as well. It's, they're taking it to the field offices and the headquarters to let them know, because it was a pretty alarming amount of people that showed their concerns. So, once we get an answer, we'll update everyone. And I went ahead and I know we had a social media thread going, so they're tagged on that as well. I'm sure they'll email me separately, but they said they'll respond on that thread as well.
So, I went ahead and did it again online after reading that thread, just to be sure and printed out the confirmation. Did, so if my original one went through, will it automatically just kick out the second one?
I'm not entirely sure. I let her know, so that's going to be part of the answer.
Okay, great, thank you.
I know, I was with one of the enumerators and we walked up and down Descanso and I said, "They don't live here, they don't live here." So, they, he kind of did a proxy thing with me because I, you know, you know who lives on your street and who doesn't and, and it's, you know, it's a large percentage of those folks, but, and then they keep going back and, back and back. And then there was a comment, "Well, maybe not, don't want to bother, bother people during dinnertime," but I don't know. I think that might be something that also has to be done so that, try to get, if you can't get them in the morning, can't get them at noon, try to get them in the evening, you know?
So, when we were going up and down the street with you, did they have a list of some of the people that confirmed that already did it or they had no list at all?
They can't tell. He couldn't get online and say. So, he was, he was kind of saying, "Don't, don't double and, don't double register, but if they do, it will be kicked out there." He can't see anything to say, "You're already on the books." So, yeah.
I'll mention that as well.
Yeah, I know they're working hard on that. Yessenya, anything else?
Sorry to add to that conversation real quick, I just want that topic.
Whose voice is that?
Lisa.
Oh, thank you, Lisa.
Sorry. Just to add to that conversation, we also, myself included, who had filled out the census quite some time ago, had run into people coming back to check on us even though we had filled it out. And this was actually the third time I've had someone come back to our address to check on us, but then realizing also that there's multiple units in our apartment and so they were actually supposed to be going to different doors in the building to check on people. And so, that was part of the reason for a revisit. I know some people have had concerns about getting visited twice, three times repeatedly, but that's part of the reason is because there's so many units that are listed as multiple address units in town and so that's part of it. But also, I think that there's some confusion, which we've tried to address already and hopefully in 10 years we'll be able to solve this problem, that the lack of using the codes the first time hasn't matched up as quickly as we were hoping for the total count. So, people who are online, which I think Slendy probably did, I did, who went online first and did it right away and didn't use a code because they didn't mail a code to us, we then ran into the issue of having the address not synced with the response yet. So, my understanding is those are getting synced up, but I don't know how long that response will be, depending on when people check it. I know that there's shorter staff than usual and have a shorter window currently, although hopefully that will change. But so that's, so just a heads up, that was also occurring, like multiple people are getting visited again even though they had already been visited in person and/or filled out the census home run.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Mayor Poota?
Couple of things. The first one is where, do we have a status about the bathrooms at the casino dock? They've been closed for quite some time.
Yeah, we were short the flashing, it was a special-made flashing. And so, once that's received on the island, we'll be back on it. It is a high priority in our workflow, so you should see that happening here within the October before it starts raining and it'll be finished up. It's, you know, at 75% complete.
These are the, where did I say?
I thought you said the casino.
The casino?
Yeah, at the casino dock.
Oh, no, I, I took it as casino way.
No, the casino dock restrooms have been closed for quite some time.
If they're closed, Councilmember Cassidy, you can get the key from the attendant out at the fuel dock to go in. It's closed for the tent purposes that all the divers aren't utilizing that because our, in the past, though, the sinks have been torn off the walls because they try to wince themselves off with fresh water and just, so that's why all the porta-potties are on the point.
Could, could we maybe put a more appropriate sign up?
I don't know what, what sign is up, Councilmember Cassidy?
It just says, "Restrooms closed."
Absolutely. Thank you.
And it looks like it might be hand-painted.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea to regulate and would fully support that, but it, to me, the, when I saw it, it just looked like they've been maybe broken or something for some time, so, thank you very much. And then, so, I, I don't know how or if this would even be possible, but in the conversations of, you know, how do we, how do we move forward, putting all things on the table, looking at, you know, saving money, but yet still moving forward, we, Mayor Marshall brought up in the last couple of meetings about moving forward on the casino dock restaurant location and whatnot. And in a conversation, I was reminded about when the city did, built the, built a couple floats for the harbor and was able to utilize city staff to build the floats, but yet hired a consultant that was in the marine industry that oversaw the project to, you know, obviously ensure that everything was done properly. Is that something that the, we could look at doing in order to build that facility so that we can move forward with doing some sort of lease? And then, of course, that may trigger some sort of requirement financially that would require us to go out to RFP and not be able to do that work in-house?
I can tell you that I can look into it and we could come back to you some numbers as close as we could get. Councilmember Cassidy, I'll look into it.
Okay. It just seems like, you know, we know building that square box was going to be somewhere in the ridiculous amount of money, part of that, you know, just being prevailing wage and, and I'm not disagreeing with all the reasons why we have prevailing wage and whatnot, but we've, that, not having the restaurant out there this summer was a real hit to us, especially with all the requirements of outdoor dining and when Mayor brought it up the last couple of meetings, just trying to find ways to think out of the box, how can we actually really move forward on this? So, whatever we can do would be great, but I'd love to get that conversation started as well.
And there was a question that has popped up regarding that site, that we need a clarification on, but?
I have to contact Boating and Waterways, just even for the RFP to go out for the fueling part of the facility, just to notify them that that's what we're doing. And then also to have a conversation with them, our, our intent to, to have the restaurant back there. They knew the restaurant was part of our dock when we originally applied for the grant, but the grant itself pretty much just covers the fueling facility.
Okay.
And when we went to council all those years ago, I don't know if you were on the council then, Michael, that it was a deliberate, because of the finances we were facing at that time, that we said just the restroom and the fueling office. End of here.
But we went out to bid in 2018 or whenever we did that and then, but now there's something else about, about getting in the restaurant business. There's a concern or something that came?
We just have to make sure that Boating and Waterways is good with what we're doing and how we're proceeding forward.
Yeah, so, yeah, going backwards to proceed forward. Anything else?
No, but I think Councilmember Lavelle might have another item to share.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Lavelle?
Thank you. Just one request and question. Previously, prior to the hospital ballot measure, being on the ballot, City Council had presented a resolution supporting in concept the development of new hospital facilities in Avalon. I wondered if we wanted to do something similar ahead of the upcoming election for the ballot initiative, the, the concept development of the new hospital, to generate that support with the current council.
So, in 2017, the City Council, we did adopt a resolution in concept development of the new hospital facilities because we cannot state that we are for or against the hospital measure, but I think, Lisa, are you asking for another resolution for this current election?
Correct, yes, just with the updated changes and the concept of that, to have the current City Council show their support for that concept development.
So, she's just asking if there's consensus, I think, to have that on the next agenda. But you can ask that yourself, Lisa.
Yes, is there consensus of that on the next agenda, please?
Then it will be on the first meeting in October.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, thank you.
September 22nd is National Voter Registration Day and I chatted with Lisa before the meeting. I don't know if there's been any efforts to actually do some active outreach to register people to vote, but if you are interested, if you would contact either Lisa Lavelle or myself and we can try to set up something for the 22nd. I don't know if that's something that Yessenya also would be interested in and I know what your registration at Vons was probably pretty successful in the past, but please contact, well, any of the councilmembers for that matter, but, but Lisa, Yessenya or myself to get something together for September 22nd, to get people registered to vote. um, to get something together for September 22nd, to get people registered to vote. And I don't have anything else. So from there, we have no presentations, we'll go to oral communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
And Mayor Marshall, I don't believe I acknowledged for the record that we received written communication, um, from a concerned citizen regarding traffic on Discouncil.
Yes, okay.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Uh, this is my second trip back since, uh, the whole COVID thing, and it's more of an observation. Uh, I just want to let the City Council know, this island has been very lucky. You guys survived a fire in 2007, and you didn't really get hit that bad with the COVID. That's something to be very grateful for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as the revenue for the island, it seems, as I walked around, it seems like everything is slowly getting back to normal. So I just want to let all the members of the City Council know, and Madam Mayor, that everything's gonna take time. I heard a couple of rants, but you have to look at the big picture. This island has been spared multiple times. Don't ever forget that. This island is only good as the people that govern it. That's you guys. So I just leave you with this. Be vigilant, keep the island in your heart, pray to God, and you won't go wrong. And hopefully I'll see you next month.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That was very sweet.
That was lovely. Thank you.
Yeah. And do we have anything for you, Michael?
Yeah, I have, uh, three comments. Uh, one is on item number three, one is on item number six, uh, and then a general comment. So I'll start with the general comment.
Sure.
Uh, a person writes, hello, this is Paul Burchell at Avalon Library. I was listening to Ms. Ratty's discussion of information about, uh, public voting locations. I am pleased to note that Avalon Library's vote-by-mail box is scheduled to be installed this Friday and will be available for accepting mail-in ballots when they can be submitted. The box will be outside the building but locked and bolted for public use 24/7. Don't return your books in the slot for the ballot, and don't put your ballot in the book returned bin. Regards, Paul Burchell, Avalon Library.
Now, thank you, Paul. Okay, we miss ya.
Uh, the next comment that I have is in regards to item number three. This is on the authorization of, uh, the solicitation of a request for bids for Pebley Beach Road revetment. Uh, this comment comes from Julie-
Because this is oral communication, we should probably wait till it's part of the-
Right, and we'll just pull those, okay?
Just 'cause it's on an item, Michael.
Yeah. And the other one is item number?
Six.
Six, or three and six? Okay. Um, okay, did you want to go through the consent items, Denise?
We have six items on the consent calendar. The first one is minutes from September 1st, 2020, regular City Council meeting. The second one is, uh, warrants to approve the dispersalment of $664,514.10, and that's for the period of August 22nd through September 4th, 2020. The third one is the authorization, uh, for the request for bids for Pebley Beach Road revetment and to approve the construction plans for the project, and I just wanted, whoops, I'm sorry. These monies come from the California Disaster Assistance Act funding, uh, because once the state of California had declared a state of emergency, staff was able to apply for those, that funding, and we received 1.534 million, and we're only asking to, not to exceed 1 million, but we do have a 25% match on that. And just to remind you of the critical infrastructure that Pebley Beach Road holds and all underneath it, and to ensure the safe travel. Number four is the, um, RFP for the operation of the Casino Fuel Dock Facility, and that's just to authorize the City Manager to issue that RFP. Number five is, sorry, extending, uh, cross-channel wharfage. We did implement that back in December 4th of 2018. It was 50 cents each way, a dollar round trip, and it had a sunset date of February of 2021, which is right around the corner, and so we're just asking to extend that indefinitely and at, at the discretion of the City Council, you would determine when to terminate that. And number six is regarding outdoor dining, and this is just strictly just to receive and file the report and to continue that until, um, December 15, 2020, unless we get to get into the restaurants earlier than that. Jim Lootjohann, um, has graciously agreed to, he's reached out to all the restaurants that are involved in it, asking them for their feedback and for, uh, lighting and how to handle the, um, weather that will be coming, the cooling weather, so, um, he's trying to establish a Zoom meeting for that to get feedback, and he says so far it's kind of been on both sides of the scale, and, so I'm anxious to hear back, and then we would bring that to the City Council for your determination of, if, how to proceed forward. But right now it was just an updateant to extend it.
Okay.
Those are our six items.
Okay, so we'll, let's kind of pull three and six unless you have others.
Or we, unless you have discussion on it, then we-
Well, okay, I, I would like, I would like to discuss kind of for Jim Lootjohann's benefit and the business community out there, just some questions, kind of, or things that I'd like him to talk with them about, 'cause I, so anyway, so, want to go, and item three again was the?
Was the RFP for Pebley Beach Road Revetment.
Okay, so do we want to?
I'll make a motion to approve items one, two, four, and five.
Thank you.
I'll second.
There's a motion? Is there any?
I'm gonna do a roll call.
I'm gonna do a roll call.
Okay, are there any comments on one, two, four, and five?
No, ma'am.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Sorry, Lisa.
Yes, please, aye.
Okay, item number three, what were the comments that, comments you have received?
So we've received one comment for item number three. This, uh, comment comes from Julie Gilbert. She writes, do the current plans posted represent the reduced scope of work as indicated in the board item? What investigations were done during the engineering phase to reduce significant cost overruns during construction? Is this a fixed-price bid or a time-and-materials bid? Is the engineer's estimate going to be included in the public documents?
Lots of questions.
I can read them one at a time.
Okay, let's do that.
So the first question is, do the current plans posted represent the reduced scope of work as indicated in the board item?
They, they represent the total scope of work if the contractor bid real low prices, okay? So the way that we're approaching this is it was built or designed for at least maybe 1.7 million dollars worth of work, okay? Um, and so that we, and we do that many times is because we have that available funding, uh, we have that available funding if we didn't have the match when we put this together. And so the way that we bid that is that we do a base bid, and then we do add alternates. And the base bid incorporates that reduced scope of work that would be the minimum level of work that would get the acceptable job done for us, understanding that there is, you know, at least 50 locations of work, spot locations of work. Some of them are very large in size, and some of them are small. Uh, some of them would be devastating if they continued on, some of them are just little nuisance areas, and there would be best to get done with a contractor while we have that out there, and hopefully what we would do, just because of the scale of the work, um, economy of scale, that we would collect the ability to do a few more locations. So what we're trying to do is get the best bang for our buck, get the priority locations done, and then add locations up to the limit of what we're saying not to exceed a million dollars.
The next question was, what investigations were done during the engineering phase to reduce significant cost overruns during construction?
Um, we, uh, had a geotechnical engineer, had two civil engineers, um, we surveyed, um, with both a drone, and then we went out in the ocean and looked from the waterside, measured all of the spaces, and then we also consulted with three contractors that do this type of work so that we could get a good sense on how they would approach it, and that's how we put the documents together.
Uh, the third question is, is this a fixed-price bid or a time-and-materials bid?
This is a, um, unit price bid, so it has a "not to exceed," but it has unit prices and it has bid additives.
And then the last question is, is the engineer's estimate going to be included in the public, public documents?
Yes.
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, um, is there any other questions or presentation that you need me to, to help you understand what we're trying to do out there? I do have the project plans available up on the display if we need to.
Okay. I think we're good.
But we will be back once we get the bids, and you'll get a full explanation. What we want is to have good numbers in front of us of what, um, would be a competitive bid, and then we'll show you the financial aspects of it and what we can do, and then we can make that selection of what we'd like to do.
Okay, thank you. And, and thank you, Jordan, I see what you're putting up, you're putting up right now. Is there a motion on item three?
I'll make a motion to authorize a solicitation of a request for bids for the Pebley Beach Road Revetment, storm damage repairs.
I'll second. Wait, there's a second? And to approve the construction plans for the project?
Oh, excuse me, and to approve the construction plans for the project. Thank you. I'll second.
Second? Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Member Tim Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye. Aye.
Oh, sorry. I got excited, I'm usually do it last, not twice. Okay. Item number six, I guess, in, Jim, I think you're out there in television land, um, a couple of questions I would want.
He's right outside, can we?
Oh, he's outside? Oh, I thought he was just at home watching us. Thank you, Jim. I just assumed you were gonna be at home watching this, but thank you. So just a couple of questions as you're moving forward with all these people. Thank, first of all, thank you for, for doing this, and it sounds like you've already done a lot of work. So I'm curious, let's say, 'cause we could move to the next phase, next tier, as soon as, we've already, we're at least two weeks into this last phase, or this first phase, right? We could move into the next phase within a week or so, correct? If the, if the county members-
Yeah, that's correct. They usually put those out on Tuesdays.
That's right, that's what they're saying. So I guess the question is, if we get to the 25%, they can do the 25% indoors. I'm curious, who would want to do the indoors of all of these people? And, you know, I'm assuming with 25% that everybody still wants to be outside, but I'm curious, will they try to, will they also want to put, for those that can, like, let's say Jack's Large Antonios, 'cause it's big, who would want to actually put the 25% in? So that's a question I have.
I think you're already doing some of the math. There, there are tipping points where it does or doesn't work depending on each facility.
Right.
And if you're bifurcating your staff to work indoors and on the beach, that can also be a huge inefficiency.
Right.
So I think it's gonna be case by case, you know, and, and then weather, obviously, having the next biggest impact.
So I would like them to share that with you, though, if they can, and they're probably, pretty much most of them are listening. And I'm also curious the number of chairs typically that are out there, you know, not so much table, 'cause it's more chairs, I think, people sitting in them than tables out there. I don't know how many they're actually doing, and how that, those numbers differ from if they were full indoor dining.
Dining rooms.
And maybe you have that information, but I'm curious kind of that way.
Again, it's been a variable, and it's been somewhat triggered by demand, but I think, I feel very confident in saying that everybody has ultimately served less than they could have served under the current mandate if it was still 25% open.
Right.
Excuse me, if it was 100% open.
I know.
At 25%, they're serving more on the beach, so I totally said that backwards.
Oh, I, okay.
With the 25% mandate, they are able to serve more people on the beach than they would be, um, were we able to, um, were we having to go indoors at 25%.
Right, oh, no, I totally get that. So I, just kind of those kinds of numbers, I guess, I'm curious, 'cause as, as we move forward and as you get answers to, you know, how do we cope with the, with the fall and the, and the winter and that kind of thing, how, but, I mean, if things could go really well in the county by three, six weeks, we could be at 50%, right? If we go up two more tiers, it'd be-
And I can, I can tell you from a few months ago, when, um, Supervisor Han brought me on to the committee, um, at the county level, 50% was the magic number for most mainland restaurateurs.
Okay.
It really was not a financial goal for them at less than 50% of their footprint.
Right, and that 50% would be hitting, oh, and it gets pretty doggone cold out here, so, yeah, so they're, I know, let's hope, no, but there might been, be, gonna, so I'm just kind of curious in numbers and what, what they're all thinking. It'll be interesting to see what you come up with. Does any, uh, comments from the council? Lisa?
I had a question, um, just wondering if there's been any discussion of, um, utilizing, um, tents in the event of rain, and if, um, the, I know the Art Association has tents at the ready potentially, if that's something that can be requested and or utilized or paid for, um, or if there's even discussions about if we're able to do 25% inside and it rains and we finally have a busy weekend, is the casino a possibility for use at 25% of the ballroom capacity or spaces like that, um, event spaces that normally could accommodate people, but those be things that could be looked at as possible locations that could either be utilized by the businesses or utilized by the island company, but could provide, uh, food and dining for visitors?
Um, I have, I have no answer for any of those with any specifics, but noted for the conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, council? Thank you very much, and does somebody make a, want to make a motion? Did you have anything else you wanted to add to?
No.
Thank you so much.
I, I did have one public comment.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the public comment comes from Matthew Affolder, Catalinex Room Escape and Catalina Dogs. He writes, thank you, council mayor and city manager for listening to my comments. I wanted to comment in support of outdoor dining experience. People love it, the feel of your sand on your feet as you enjoy a margarita, a nice steak, and watch the waves roll in. It is a magical and unique dining experience that I feel we should celebrate, promote, and continue. I agree that you, we need regulation and the new issues need to be addressed. The ideas to increase lighting give a sense of continuity and increased safety aspects are all excellent. We're already seeing increased social media exposure through Instagram, which is focused on the beachside dining. This idea, if done properly, could push Avalon dinner scene to a new level and increase our visitors' love for Avalon. I fully support continuing outdoor dining, would like to see it as a permanent fixture in Avalon. Jim from the chamber has done an amazing job in communicating to vendors, restaurateurs, and the public. Thank you for your time, Matthew Affolder.
Thank you, Matt, for your comments. Okay, is there a motion to receive and file the report?
I'll make a motion to receive and file the report.
Okay, there's our second?
I'll second.
Okay. If no comments, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Do we want to go to the Avalon?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do I have to close this out and then you open this?
No, I think I can.
I can just keep this open?
You can close right after mine.
Okay.
Uh, call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital.
Trustee De La Rosa?
Here.
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Trustee Lavelle?
Here.
And Chairman Ponce?
Here. Any written communications, announcements?
I have none of either.
Any, no presentations, oral communications? Anyone from the public that would like to comment in regards to the hospital?
You have nothing coming through, Michael?
No.
Okay, thank you.
See, none? Uh, consent calendar, Denise?
We have two items on consent. We have minutes from the July 7th Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting. We have a CEO August 2020 report and the CFO's July 2020 report. Move to approve-
Move to approve items one and two on consent.
And I'd just like to make one comment. Um, I was happy to read, and hopefully it's good news, Jason, that the, about your contract with FIPA, there's been some movement going forward and we are, you can accept those folks now? Is that what I read? I don't know what it did to the reimbursement rate, but it sounded like this was something kind of new.
Uh, we have been waiting patiently for another draft version of a contract from FIPA over the past couple of months, um, but we do have an understanding and an agreement with them that we will see all FIPA patients, and when the agreement is signed, uh, they will then pay us. So we are seeing FIPA patients currently, and we will continue to see FIPA patients.
Great, thank you. That's a leap ahead. Okay, there's a motion and a second. No further comment, call for the vote.
Who was my second, Cindy has a motion?
Yo, my meeting.
Oh, God! Maybe when this happens, you should come sit in this chair for a minute and we'll just clean up a little bit. I'm sorry.
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
Trustee De La Rosa?
Aye.
Trustee Cassidy?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Yes.
Trustee Lavelle?
Aye.
Chairman Ponce?
Aye.
I apologize.
Having no other business, we're adjourned.
Okay, and now we have a closed session, I believe?
We have closed session, uh, it's conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. The name of the case is Colich &amp; Sons versus the City of Avalon, LASC case number 20STC V06878.
Okay, we'd like to say goodnight to Tony. Uh, I don't think we'll be gone long, but goodnight, Tony.
If we're gonna have a full room, can we stay here versus moving?
Yes, Scott, are you there?
Yeah.
Don't hang up, okay, because we're just gonna stay on this, on this line. We're gonna stay in the chambers, and we'll make sure that, uh, Jordan has us off TV.
And everybody leaves the room.